Yeah, you can click on the website.
It is.
We know where we can help.
It is. Sorry, I saw it.
I told you.
If you go to the time, oh, you can read it. Okay, and then I got me so we got and we the video itself, but what just needed. Yeah, so that is really the link. But then it's like because I'm in the country, so we got a voice talk for what we need to ask for. Not very good, right? And then, um, the meeting.
Hold on, yes, yes, yes.
So because we are very close to this, that's my hardest part.
Eight, seven, six, good. We've got a couple more seconds before we get it started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Plymouth Town Council meeting for January sixth, twenty twenty-sixth. I'd like to call this meeting to order. On notification of the fire exits, if you exit behind you, you can go to your left and exit directly to the street, or you can exit to the right and exit through the police department. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the United States of America, the Republic releases its nomination under that individual for the beginning of this law.
Thank you. Item number four is our invocation. I would just like to note that I was able to attend the Police and Citizens Award. That was award ceremony itself December eighteenth. And we were reminded of the great risks that our police, fire, first responders take. So I would like to, in their honor, say that I'm going to ask for God's blessing for all of our first responders, the people in our community who keep us safe. And God bless the town of Plymouth. I would also like to ask for a moment of silence in honor of William Bill Oganowski, folks that are regular attendees of the various meetings over the years, Town Council, particularly the downtown committee, the downtown revitalization committee. Bill was a regular attendee. For those of you may remember seeing Bill, he was a regular patroller of our downtown and Main Street, and he was a close friend of mine. He was a good friend of Town of Plymouth. So I just asked for a moment of silence in honor of Bill Oganowski. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item number five is acceptance of the meeting minutes from December second. Do I have a motion to accept the meetings of December second, twenty twenty?
I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of December second with the change of, I'm Tisha and myself switching on the silence. I was doing the annual tour and I am assigned to the Fire Commission.
Second, by Mr. Tisha, thank you. So there's a motion on the floor to accept the minutes with the amendment as mentioned by Sue. Is there any further discussion? Any further changes? Hearing now, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much, that carries. Item number six is public comment on agenda items. If anyone from the general public would like to come forward, state your name. There's a recording sheet, your name, address. If you'd like to address anything that's on our agenda tonight, and a reminder later on in the meeting, there will be an opportunity for folks to address the council for anything that is not on our agenda. Does anyone want to speak to an agenda item at this time? Please come on, step forward. Thank you. The volume is up there, so careful.
Patty DeHuff, Twenty One Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Sikorski and members of the council. I want to talk to you tonight about oaths. Each of you took an oath to uphold the U.S. and Connecticut constitutions. While some may view an oath as a trivial necessity in order to take a seat at the people's table, I take your oath as a covenant between you, we the people, and God. The Oxford English Dictionary defines an oath in part as "a solemn or formal declaration invoking God as witness to the truth of a statement." The preamble to the Connecticut Constitution acknowledges God. It states, it starts with these words, "The people of Connecticut acknowledging with gratitude the good providence of God. Every decision you make will be seen by God as either upholding your oath or violating it. I pray you will uphold it." Connecticut's legislature has created law, new laws. Some of these laws were enacted illegally in violation of the Connecticut Constitution. Stand firm on your oath to uphold the Connecticut Constitution. There is another very important document critical to you. It's our Plymouth Charter. I hope by now you have read it and will refer to it often as you deliberate on any given topic or issue. There may come a time when you may be given advice in violation of our charter. Know what it says so that you will be able to reject that advice. God has given each one of you a voice. Use it. Let there be vigorous deliberations among you without regard for time constraints, for each of you brings to the people's table a neat perspective that God has given only to you. You see things differently from your colleagues, and that's by design. That's so that you will be able to protect our town from those who may seek to destroy it or use it for their own personal gain as they attempt to make backroom deals. Resist those voices. There are other voices you need to hear, the people's voices. Those, they bring unique, their own unique perspectives to any given issue. Under council rules and procedures, please adopt a rule that allows the people to comment throughout the meeting. Do not reject these voices, for like a brilliant diamond with many facets, their voices will help you to make wise decisions for our town and help you to keep your oath to the U.S. and Connecticut constitutions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just a gentle reminder, I'm sure it's keeping to agenda items for the opening comments. Thank you. If it's not directly related to an agenda item, I appreciate it. Okay, understood. Thank you. Appreciate that, ma'am.
Yeah.
Agenda item, does anybody want to comment on an agenda item?
Virginia Kane, eighteen Adams Drive. We have recently seen the Director of Public Works terminated, followed closely by the Superintendent's convenient retirement. Now residents are hearing that the same superintendent may be receiving a consulting contract. Has this proposed contract been reviewed by a labor attorney or the town attorney? If the intention truly is to clean house, then clean house, not do favors for our friends. I respectfully ask the council to ask questions, really ask if this is in the best interest of the people you represent, the taxpayers, and not just be a rubber stamp in a rash decision.
Thank you for your comments. Any other additional public comment on an agenda item? Thank you for your contributions, folks. Appreciate that. We're going to move to number seven, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of additional items from what I sent you, folks, but nothing too drastic. I'll point them out as I go through the mayor's report. First of all, I want to say thank you to our town clerk, Linda Conopess, who's filming this evening as our recording secretary as Trish Hale is dealing with the flu. I reached out to Trish yesterday, and she was regretfully not able to make it tonight. So thanks, Linda, for helping at the last minute. I would like to say thank you to all the agency's staff, volunteers who provided services to the town of Plymouth over the holidays. I'm probably going to miss some people, but I just want a couple of people I want to mention. It's that I think it's extremely important to know services that were provided. First of all, the Plymouth Food Pantry. I don't have the numbers, but I know that there were hundreds of families that were assisted over the holidays by the Plymouth Food Pantry. The Small Wonders Program and its volunteers, well over eighty children received benefit from that program. The Plymouth Beautification Committee, the Road Re Club, other local businesses, and all the volunteers to help ensure the success of the tree lighting on December sixth. Again, the amount of families had food on their table and gifts for their children at Christmas was impacted significantly by everyone's efforts over this holiday. I think the town of Plymouth should be very proud of its generosity and of its citizens with the amount of time spent volunteering and the generous amount of money and gifts that were donated for these programs. So thank you very much on behalf of the town of Plymouth Council. Just some general updates, comments on recent snowstorms. I know a lot of chatter about this issue. I would first like to recognize the town crewmen, the town crew and their efforts during the storms. Due to the holidays and the illness, and various illnesses, two significant ones, we had a shortage of personnel. During the past two events, the larger event that occurred with seven inches of snow and then the one that was just after Christmas, we had only four persons operating our snowplows. We also, I also want to recognize that we utilized our current vendor that we're in contract with who also provided support to the town crew. I think they did an outstanding job considering the personnel issues that we're facing. Other storm-related issues, we did utilize our ability to place a parking van for the larger snowstorm. We will continue to do that within the guidelines. It's extremely helpful when citizens obey the parking van and keep their cars off the road at all possible. It makes things run a lot smoother, so we appreciate that. We are working on a storm-related policy and communication protocol. It's under review, and when that's completed out with the council, I'll provide you a copy of that, and we'll get the information on the town website. I also want to say thank you to the public for their patience and assistance, especially clearing the sidewalks after the storms. We know that that's sometimes a burden, and not everybody's able to do that. Well, we were getting to other sidewalks using our tools when staffing allows it. A comment, or rather, a follow-up to the comments from the December second council meeting. First of all, regarding public comments on the town's response to the FOIA requests, Freedom Information Act requests, regretfully, one of the three requests was not acknowledged in the timeframe that's described by state law, as was noted by our citizens. However, at this time, to the best of my knowledge, all of our requests have been responded to, and not only that, the information that was requested has been made available to the folks who requested or who made those requests. With respect to the comments regarding the number of and use of the police vehicles, as we enter the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven budget season, a full review of the police vehicles, the number, their use, will be, will occur during the entire budget process. I am sure that our Board of Finance and department heads are going to be fiscally responsible and will bring recommendations to the mayor's office for the final budget that in regards to police vehicles. Also, regarding the question of our advisory boards, which was, which I've been promoting, we are at this time moving forward to establish a community advisory board. The plan is to meet monthly with the mayor to discuss general concerns of the community. If members of the public are interested in participating, please contact the mayor's office. Several individuals have already expressed their interest, and depending on the amount of the folks that we get and the size of the interest will determine the size of this new committee. It's an advisory board, technically. I'm following up with members of the Economic Development Commission and our consultant regarding the need to find and to form an advisory board that would focus on economic situations. I know that's also something that we committed to, but at this time, we're going to just start with the Citizens Advisory Committee and kind of see how that goes. Some professional staff updates. I'd like to say congratulations to Jim Schultz, who retired from the town after thirty-plus years of service. Jim's experience and general operational knowledge will not be easily replaced. Fortunately, I believe we're very fortunate to have reached an agreement whereby Jim will provide some administrative consulting services for a short time while we look for a replacement. The position for Highway Supervisor is posted internally right now and will be posted publicly after the two-week requirement by contractual agreement. In the interim, I've asked Dennis Kizis, who has the experience of filling in for Jim Schultz while he was out on vacation, et cetera, to serve as the acting highway superintendent. He will be responsible for the operations and all and oversight and all on-call responsibilities. All the necessary departments have been notified of Dennis's taking over that responsibility. The interview process for public works directors in progress. I will keep the council advised of the status. And I want to let folks know that a meeting was held with two members of the state DOT Transportation Division to discuss the possible use of ATESD, which is called, which is Automated Traffic Enforcement Device, as an option for Route Six in the Plymouth section of town. As you know, we continue to have vehicle crashes in the area of Route Six and Carter Road. ATESD is the use of cameras to track speeding vehicles and ultimately send out citations. This tool has been effective in Middletown and some rural areas such as Washington, Connecticut to reduce speeding. Other general options were also discussed in this meeting. This problem has gone on for many years, as efforts as efforts to give residents relief has not been very successful. This option would require the town to create a townwide ordinance for the use of the devices and the cameras and the tracking devices to be used to track folks speeding and automatically report those issues. So at this time, I plan to bring the police commission, bring this issue to the police commission as a potential option, as well as continue dialogue with the state DOT. I will keep the council and the public advised of these meetings as they progress, and as appropriate, we'll open it up as may be necessary to have public hearings and other inputs. But this is just a preliminary meeting, and I want to let you folks know that it has taken place. I don't have the statistics. I know I mentioned it last meeting briefly, but there's been multiple crashes in the area of Carter Road and Six. Some of them severe, we're fortunate we haven't had more problems. Some technical updates. Full review of the town's website is underway. The preliminary findings indicate that the site needs to be on a modern, new, modernized platform. Our new platform, our new platform will provide improved security, more self-service service options for citizens, and allow for faster real-time updates and other features that will improve its usability. We're working with the town's vendor, current vendor, and additional vendors may be needed to verify the cost of the upgrade and offer other services. We're confident we can use the existing funds in the technology budget, or re-prioritize items in the tech upgrade plan to ensure we can properly rebuild the website. We expect the upgrade can be accomplished in two to three months. We're also working on launching a mayor's office Facebook page to manage communication and public service announcements. There's discussions as late as today about that, and I'll keep the council informed as we move forward down. This is a new item. I'm happy to report that the financial audited financial, I'm sorry, the final audited financial statements for the fiscal twenty twenty-four year were completed and issued and supplied to the Department of Operations and Management. They've been informed of that, and they haven't given us any reply that there's any problems with that. There are still some outstanding items that the Finest Department is completing as required, and we're hoping to have everything complied for the twenty twenty-four month completely finished, including response to comments, and that should be completed by the end of January, and we're meeting with the Office of Policy and Management in February to regular meeting. I have not gotten any communication from them since we've sent this information to them, and we're already starting to work on the groundwork for the twenty twenty-five report. Lastly, in your packet, you'll find a variety of details of complaints or problems brought to the mayor's office. Issues involve land use, permitting, public works, road and bridge repair, and human services. In each case, the mayor's office worked with the appropriate department to remedy the situation. Please let me know if you have any questions on the report that I provided to you. Kind of a lengthy report tonight. I appreciate everybody's patience, and if you have any follow-up questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me in the mayor's office. Little bit of a change in the normal procedure, or we start changing the agenda items. We're going to now bring up Town Council Liaison Reports under item eight. I'd like to cover this at this point in time. We've still got some business to take care of after this, but please, if anyone has Town Council Liaison Reports, I'd like to cover them now. I'm going to get the start on my far left.
Super Commission is still plugging away on their studies. They're just about wrapping up with that, so they'll have some numbers putting together over the next couple of months to see which way we're going there. They're also purchasing a new bath truck and a snake truck to eliminate some of the excess costs of farming that out. Basketball is going on with public, or park and rec right now, so they're full boat into that. And we're just in limbo right now in the Public Works Department with no director and no highway superintendent. So things are running a little bit rough there, but they're getting through.
Thank you very much, CJ.
Sorts right. I am a liaison to the Fire Commission, the Police Commission, the Human Services, and Housing Appeals. I've been to three out of four of them. Fire Commission is incredibly well done at their meetings. It didn't take long to go through everything they had. They have a lot of communications, so that was really good to go to that one. The Police Commission, I attended, we had talked about the Route Six, with the accidents at Route Six and Carter Road, so I can't wait to tell her that they're going to be doing something with it because the people, one of the people that lives there is afraid to go home half the time because she's afraid the cars are going to end up in her yard, as is her neighbor. So they resent some of the letters out, and it's nice to see that there's been some movement on that. Human Services, we discussed the veterans liaison that we've been talking, I've been talking about since they started. We have a meeting that we'll do at the end of January. We need a liaison to, to help the veterans to kind of streamline that whole thing, so this person will know where to go for help. So that's, that's going to be done hopefully very soon. That's it.
Thank you very much. Joe?
I didn't have specifically, but you're absolutely welcome.
Okay.
December twelfth, we're liaison to Board of Finance, and apparently a leaky meeting, but things moved along quite well. They reviewed and approved the minutes from April through November. They considered, I think they said that that's not going to happen yet, so hopefully not. The comptroller also presented a sample of what we call an expenditure report for the committee to comment once it's finalized and reported in the standard process that you treat every this would be a twenty-six calendar dates were discussed. They're going to be setting up, starting on the fifteenth, Thursday, each month, and starting that we were in nineteenth through April, we need twice a week. Initial budget is due, that we were attached with the final term budget, which is going to be completed by April, so. And going out, so the risk assessment for the fiscal twenty-four, and both in the right way, we're going to get.
Thank you. Ron, I will just comment to give an update on where we are. Okay, Sue. There is a proposal on Preston Road regarding a solar farm. That particular project was put up in front of our zoning, right? It was, we're planning a zoning, right? And then, and then it was, it was pulled from that or withdrawn from that committee locally. The applicant is going forward through a process that was set up by the state. It's called the Society of New Council. Please correct me if I state anything wrong, going from some memory. We've worked, I've been keeping the council informed and kind of on what's been progressing with that. There was a deadline set up. We did work with our town attorney, and we worked with Representative, I'm sorry, State Senator Henry Martin, our planning folks, and we did send a formal, what they call letter of intervention, and Attorney Hamsey, correct me if I'm mistaken, if you think. We did submit a letter of intervention saying the reasons that we, as a community, were very concerned about the proposal that was being brought forward. The last I heard, I believe that we, well, we absolutely requested a public hearing, which is up to the Siting Council to determine or agree to whether or not they have a public hearing. It's kind of in the state's hands, if you will. The, we did receive correspondence from the state saying that our response was on the agenda. Did I say that correctly? And we will be notified if, in fact, that that Siting Council agrees to hold a public hearing. So I know that that's, we've gotten a lot of communication through my office and probably to some individual council members about that project. There's some concern about it. We are doing our best to provide information to state our position of why we don't think that that location is a particular good idea. Certainly doesn't reflect our general concerns or understanding that we need alternative energy. I will recognize our town attorney, Mr. Hamsey, for a quick comment. Thank you, Bill.
Just for everyone's information, the Siting Council scheduled a meeting for Thursday at one o'clock to take up our request for a public hearing, and that's by Zoom. So if you go on the Connecticut Siting Council website, you'll find the link to the, to the petition, and you can join the meeting through Zoom Thursday at one o'clock.
Thank you for that additional information, Mr. Hamsey. So that, you know, that's kind of a situation where we feel like we're putting the best interests or representing the best interests of the community as best we can within the interests of the community as best we can within the limits of the process. Thank you everybody for your reports. Keep it, absolutely.
Well, I got a question on that. Have you read the engineer report? Can you share that state of the, of the story?
I can't hear you.
Put on your gear.
If that, if the size of the solar farm was less than one megawatt, that it did, that it was in the hands of the local and not the state, and wasn't that the case?
Yes. So what the applicant is saying, well, what the applicant is doing is trying to get a declaratory judgment from the citing council that says that the citing council has the exclusive jurisdiction over this project rather than the town. That's the process. We're just asking the citing council to hold a public hearing regarding not just that issue, but also the plan that they have submitted. But yes, there was an engineer that was retained by the town to prepare a report, which we submitted to the citing council. But the process is the applicant wants the citing council to retain jurisdiction over the project. I thought that if it was over a certain size, if it's under one megawatt, then this is a process where the citing council can assume jurisdiction.
More to come. Thank you for the clarity. We are doing our best to represent the interests of the folks in this town as much as possible. And I also want to recognize all the folks who are doing it on their own, you know, local residents who've, I believe, submitted letters, petitions, and all those kinds of things. So it's a fine line to walk, and we're doing our best. Thank you for that. Okay. All right, let's move to number, item number nine. This is the information that was provided to you in advance. This is, in fact, an approval of a contract for the Highway Department Support Services. I will be glad to provide a little bit of background on this. The, as I mentioned, Jim Schultz has placed and has executed on his retirement options from the town of Plymouth. We recognize that we need some support in this area from an administrative perspective, with the fact that we have a younger highway department. So I worked with council, meaning our town council, I'm sorry, our town attorney, and our human resources provider to develop an agreement that we thought was within the law. It was reviewed by our town attorney, and that revised document is what is included in your packet. I think that this is a necessary action. It's a part-term, limited contract. It is not an open-ended agreement by any means, and it has limits on the amount of hours of support. Based on what we feel, we need some additional guidance until we are able to replace the highway superintendent, which that position has already been posted, and we're hoping to move forward to that as rapidly as possible. I would be grateful if there was a motion to accept the agreement for the Highway Department Support Services that you will provide. Is there a motion to that effect?
So.
Motion, Mr. Green. Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Sue Boyard. Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? And please, folks, I openly accept any and want dialogue on this topic. Any comments, questions, please?
Mr. Mayor, who wrote this contract?
This contract was provided to us in conjunction with the original draft contract through our HR support person, inputs from myself, based on what we wanted to make sure that we limited the services that were provided. I hope you note that it's, does not require, it's not supervisory capacity. And then it was also reviewed by our town attorney, who also made some updates. So there's multiple inputs.
Did the town labor attorney look at this at all, or just the town attorney?
Just the town attorney.
Do you think the advisor level of labor attorney will look at this, just to make sure that everything's legit in the wording and the pay and the hours, and does not think a breach of contract between his retirement pension and working as a subcontractor?
We, I didn't discuss all those details with the labor attorney, but I did confirm that this contract does not interfere with the retirement provisions from the town of Plymouth. That, that was, that was discussed.
Another question is, when he's working with procurement, with new person coming in, working on bids and purchasing, is he going to have the ability to bid on any of these projects, or has he got to refuse himself from bidding for any company that he is working for, or his own personal company?
That is not, language is not exclusive. We've written in the contract, but that is implied. You have, you can't double dip.
And was there any thought about any of the previous performance issues that we've had before with turnover in the department and leadership of the department from the past year with the human resources department?
There was nothing brought to my attention. Thank you very much. Anything else? Anybody else questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to make, I just want to make sure that it is kind of highlighted under human resources that he is not involved with hiring our, our next highway firm. I think that, right in here, or any other human resources responsibilities.
Well, I, that language was added afterwards at the recommendation of council, so I think it's appropriate. I mean, that was my understanding that there's, you know, this is an advisory capacity dealing with the training, procurement, and what was the first one? I'm sorry, I didn't find.
Oversight, training payroll, payroll craft oversight review, procurement, purchasing, generative operations. I don't know if I necessarily object to him phasing the new person in, but I don't know if I want him giving his input on who we should hire.
Well, that's what it says, do not include.
Correct.
Right. So I, that, I believe that's why that was added, is to, to, the, it's an advisory for operational. It is not an advisory on hiring or replacement.
Could that be made more specific, that it's an operational advisory role, not the hiring advisory role?
You could have town attorney review it again and get back to you. I think, Mr. Hamsey, do you understand the concern?
I think it's prudent for both positions, public works director Ian, highway supervisor, that he shouldn't be involved in any of the hiring or negotiations of those two positions. It should just be something that helps support whoever's coming in, not laying out who is coming in.
I'm not sure I understand exactly your point.
He shouldn't be involved in any of the interviews or hiring of anyone, whether it's the public works director or the highway supervisor.
Now, now I understand what you're saying. Yeah. I mean, I, I think that that's, that could be implied. I don't know. I'd have to consult with the town attorney. I certainly don't want to get into detail, but I, when we wrote the agreement, or when we collaborated and writing the agreement, we wanted to be very specific that there was no supervisory oversight as a responsibility, and I don't think there's any language that implies that there's contributions to the hiring. But I could ask the town attorney to comment, but that, again, I'm not, you know, I guess I'm still struggling a little bit with your concern. I recognize, I'll recognize, Mr. Hamsey.
I think we can add a provision, make it explicit, that the role and vision does not include hiring or offering input into hiring, whether it's a highway supervisor or a public works director. If that's what you're concerned. I'd be happy with that language in there.
Okay. So I'm going to try to form that into a motion, right? Or intended to the motion, or if we'd like to retract.
What would you want me to say?
And do we have the motion withdrawn?
No.
Okay. So then a motion would be in, or?
I did, I did.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Okay. I had it written down, and then you, thank you, Joe.
I withdraw.
Okay.
I withdraw my say.
Okay. Okay. So a new motion would be in order to accept the agreement with the changes that the, as directed by the town attorney, to exclude at the precipitation of the applicant in the, help me now, Mr. Attorney. Do you have some draft language that we could put into the record as part of the amendment, or part of the motion?
So the contract would be revised to make it explicit that this would not include any input to hiring a successor supervisor or a public works director. And I'll create that language in, in certain.
Okay. Does that interest your concerns, Mr. Zagursky?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So a motion would be in order to approve the contract with the changes recommended by the town attorney. Is there a motion to that effect?
I made the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there a second?
I said the last.
Second, Sue. All right. Any other further discussion or questions on the citing? I'm going to call for roll call vote, please. And, Mr. Zagursky?
I don't know.
No? Ms. Boyard?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, that passes three to two. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Hamsey, I'll work with you first thing tomorrow to make those adjustments to that, okay? Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your input. Next item is number 10, which is discuss and take action as may be necessary in refund or repayment of property taxes.
So moved.
For the benefit of the general public, the town council members were provided a list of property taxes that are to be refunded. This is kind of standard procedure. We received the wait, the list in a different format, and we had a big agenda, so not every single one of these revisions was placed into the, into this agenda record. But all the town council people have the details of the refundable of, of property taxes. The motion was made to accept. I mean, just got this documented, okay? Motion was, Ron. Second by Joe Green. Thank you very much. Any discussion on the refund of property tax motion on the floor? Hearing no, just do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. We have one, item 11, Board of Commission resignations. We received the letter of resignation from the Housing Authority Commission, from Gladys Vasquez. You should have received a copy of this. Everybody get that, okay? All right. So a motion would be in order to accept the resignation of Gladys Vasquez, or as from the Housing Authority Commission. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion TJ, second. Ron, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing no, voice vote. All those in favor, accepting the resignation, please say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, boards and commission appointments. I may not have them in the exact order that you have them in your packet, but we'll give it a shot here. The first one is to reappoint Peter Giannasini to the Water Push and Control Authority. Is there a motion to reappoint Peter Giannasini to Water Push and Control?
So moved.
TJ, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And there's second, it's by Joe. Thank you. Any discussion? I know Peter's been serving in a variety of boards and capacities over the years, and he's always there. Hearing no, discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed? And we'll carry. Thank you, everybody. Get these boards back. I know there's other outstanding boards and commissions, but we're going to do as many as we can as they come in. The second one is also a reappointment of Scott Gray to the Water Push and Control Authority, a current serving member, and you had that paperwork. Is there a motion to reappoint Scott Gray?
So moved.
TJ has the motion. Thank you. Is there a second? Second, enter the table three, rule one. Okay. Ray got in there quicker. Okay, appreciate that. All right, any conversation, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. This is the third position, again, a reappointment to the WPCA for James Maloney Jr. Is there a motion for reappointment of James Maloney?
Make that motion.
Motion, Joe?
Also.
I heard the second way down there. Thank you, TJ. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the reappointment of James Maloney to WPCA for three-year terms, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. This is under new appointments, but I can almost say it's a reappointment of sorts. This is for Anthony Rabetto to rejoin wetlands, inland wetlands. I don't know why I had WTC written next to this. Sorry about that. This is inland wetlands commission, Anthony Rabetto, who had served and then left the commission, as I recall, was the order of how things happened, because he did an interim stint as a town council member. We thank you for that. So this is sort of a new reappointment, if you will. Is there a motion for Anthony Rabetto to be appointed to inland wetlands conservation?
So moved.
It's a double win. We'll go with Joe for the motion and the second. TJ, any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, please.
I think I wrote this another time, but it says he's applying for, he's waiting for the resignation of Mike Mafia, letter of, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, it was a little confusing, because we, at one of our very first meetings, we approved the resignation of Mike Mafia, but it, it wasn't in effect until January 1st. So, right, so originally Anthony was willing to go on as a alternate, but as it turns out, because of the opening, we're going, yeah, so that clears, okay. All right. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and thank you for your service again, sir. Very qualified person on that role. Thank you. Okay, this is a new appointment for our Economic Development Commission. This is a vacancy due to a resignation, which was approved by this council, I think, either last month or the month before. This is to appoint Robert Wilcox to the vacancy to fill on economic development. Is there a motion to appoint Robert Wilcox on economic development?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Joe?
Second.
Second, TJ. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the appointment, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and we'll, thank you, Mr. Wilcox, who's with us tonight. Thank you for joining the group. I'm optimistic that the Economic Development Commission is going to be very busy over the next several months, and thank you in advance for your service. Okay, thank you. We are on item 14. I would need a motion to take off the table, the item from 12 to 2 meeting, which was the discussion, our. which was the discussion or finalizing of our council dates from 26, or for the finalized meeting dates for the town council for 2026. Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
So moved.
Motion, no. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second, I was there, thank you. Oh, that recording secretary, things are moving here. You, okay. Getting you back into shape, getting you back into shape. Okay, so, so that's off the table. So a very quick reminder, we were discussing the calendar and there were two outstanding items. One was the August meeting, I believe, right? We approved it, we had said that, I think originally we had the August meeting was not scheduled and said it was the July meeting that should have been there. So we approved everything but in August. We approved all the calendar except for August. And then there was a question about the, the, yeah, right. We might have to move that, but I think we can do that procedurally. The other outstanding item was that the council meeting fell on Election Day. I think that was the other item. And you'll have to forgive me because I don't, I should have them in front of me and I do not. Do you recall, Mr. Green? I apologize. Somehow I don't have them in front of me. Oh, here we go, thank you. Thank you, temporary recording secretary. All right, so the August regular meeting, right, was not on the original sheet and then the conflict was November 3rd, which is Election Day, was the other one. And so we had left that to be determined. So we can, we can move on it together or we can separate it and hold off on the Election Day date. We just want to fill in the calendar as much as we can. I, I would recommend to the council that we approve or agree to have the August regular meeting scheduled, which would be the first Tuesday of August. And then we'll, we could revisit the November date. Or you could take it, it's your pleasure. We just need to resolve it for the purposes of calendar. We want to have it, I know, I know the general consensus seemed to be, yes, we want an August meeting because we agreed that July is generally the meeting that we do not hold, testing my memory. And then Election Day may be a conflict, but it's the council's pleasure. I'd like to move forward, one or two or both or none, and we could retable. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we schedule the August meeting for August 3rd or August 4th, Tuesday, and we move the October meeting to the following Tuesday, which will be the.
Sorry, November, right.
Yeah, November should be the 13th.
Right, November 13th, okay. Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the motion on the table is for the August, the first Tuesday of August would be the regular meeting and then we're just pushing out the November meeting and scheduling it for the following week, right? Okay. I got it. Any other, any discussion, comments, concerns?
It would be November 10.
November 10, okay. Okay, so, right, so we're just pushing out one week, okay? Yeah, all right, so that's, that's fine.
I was thinking though that November 10th is the day before Veterans Day and I've written that the town hall is closed, I haven't been to the field yet.
Shouldn't, shouldn't. Yep, no, good point, good point. Further discussion or questions? Okay, the motion, we'll just do a regular voice vote. Everybody in favor of the motion restoring the August meeting to the first Tuesday? And the November meeting would then be the second Tuesday, if I'm understanding that correctly? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, none? Okay, thank you for that quick handy dandy reference material. Motion was, Joe?
No.
Sorry, motion, Ray? I'm sorry, thank you for clarifying.
I made the motion and I'm ready.
I second.
It was the other way around. TJ was fastest to the draw.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, thank you, we want to get this straight, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your opinions on that item. Our calendar now for the year 2026 is complete. Okay. Item 15 is, there is, we need to meet in executive session with the full town council and the town attorney and representing, and also representative attorney, Jim Tullberg, in executive, in executive session, executive session to discuss pending litigation. What, we would need just a procedural comment so folks know exactly what's going on. This is to discuss pending litigation. We would entertain a motion to adjourn temporarily so this council could move to the next room to discuss legal matters. And then we would return from that session and there may or may not be action resulting from that executive session. That is what's going on. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Joe? Second. Ron, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much, folks. I don't know how long this might last public, but we will take this council and the representing folks that we've invited to executive session. We will adjourn to the room across the hall and then we will return and we will restart the regular meeting, so short recess. Thank you very much.